Good evening, I'm Art Whitman, Vice Chair of the Shafter's Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, August 6th. First of all, is there anybody on the board that has a conflict of interest with any of the things stated?
No.
Yeah. Approval of minutes, you told me there's quite a few.
Yeah, we have a few that we've been waiting to have the right combinations of people here tonight. We have July 2nd, which would be Art, Joe, and Ken. These are previously distributed meetings. This is the meeting where we canceled the Water Board.
Accept the motion to accept the minutes of July 2nd.
Subvoed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I wasn't there.
Yep, so three, another one.
Three oh one, just write that on there.
You can just sign it.
Oh, just sign it, okay.
Then we have the June 4th Select Board Meeting, which would be Art, Tony, and Joe.
Okay, June 4th. Accept a motion to accept the minutes of June 4th.
Subvoed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Understood.
And then we have the special meeting that will use to pay bills on June 27th, which is Art, Ken, and Joe.
Motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting on June 27th.
Subvoed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Understood.
Thank you, I think that's all of them.
Yep.
Okay, minutes, we've got one more, it's a big one, but... Looking for a motion to...
Motion to approve.
The warrant, what's the, what warrant is this?
You...
Number four, is that right? Warrant number four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ken, second by Tony. Items over a thousand. Greater heights for taking down some trees, fifteen hundred dollars. And then we've got Sun Trust Equipment for thirty-eight thousand, that must be a payment for...
That's the grader and the dod, I believe that's the last payment on those.
On both of them?
Yeah, it was combined.
Good enough.
Subvoed.
Good. Goodbye.
And the LTC, twenty-seven thousand.
That's where you get the second half of the year insurance.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, four zero zero. Does anybody have any announcements? No one knows anything?
Got it.
Do you have any announcements?
There might be something, Art, just before I left the house, there was a story on Channel 3 News about PFOA air emissions from them.
Yeah, it was in the Banner, yeah.
Oh, I don't read the Banner, so...
Okay.
But it was out there, they're still, there's more to come, I guess, but they weren't really that elaborate. But, of course, state commanders argued against it.
Yes.
And I guess it was some professors, some medical college along with the state.
They did a whole big study on it.
So I didn't understand if there was anything really much different than what we already got, except that they may expand it.
Well, it's more widespread, they found a lot greater than what they were.
Yeah.
Public, or let's see, what do we got? Public comments? I assume you're here for that?
Yes. Hi guys.
Hi.
Um, I'm Jenny Rozicki, the Director of the John G McCullough Free Library, and I thought I'd stop by with just some information and updates about how things are going at the library. Any of the information in these packets, it's available at the library, so folks are more than welcome to come down and check it out. The first page is just sort of a overview of who we are, what we do, who we serve, sort of our boast points about last year, which was kind of a banner year for us. And we're well on track to meet our door stats and our circulation, which means the number of people coming to the library, the number of people attending programs, and the number of items that are being circulated every year. So we're well on track, that wasn't an anomaly, as far as I can see. Let's see, the second page of this packet are the results of our five-year plan. This is what we plan to do over the course of the next five years in response to surveys that we sent out and a community conversation that we hosted last year. These are sort of needs that people have asked us to help meet, or what we can do to improve service. And I went through today and checkmarked everything that we've kind of already put in motion, so it's sort of all on its way, but that's what we're planning. If anybody has any questions about anything in here, please feel free to ask or stop by the library, and if you want to take a look at the packet, for, I guess, everybody in Shafter's, feel free to stop by. And also, thanks, I'd like to thank Shafter's residents for approving the appropriations increase after town meeting. So, it's so good to have that support and the funding in order to meet those needs, so we could not have gotten this far even. The last page is kind of a, it's a, it is an update on our operating budget, where we are this year. So, North Bennington also approved an increase in funding in April, and they are carrying the heaviest burden of funding right now. Let's see, so we had an awesome annual fund in 2017, it was our best ever, by miles.
Are you making any money on the endowment?
Actually, if you go down a little farther, we, due to shortfalls...
You're withdrawing?
We did withdraw.
But your, the amount of the endowment is two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand?
Yes.
So are you making any money at all?
That's six thousand.
Really?
They're invested extremely conservatively.
I guess so.
Yeah.
And you have no control over that? Does your board have any control over it?
My board does.
Could I suggest that they start, I mean, people are making money.
Yes.
The stock market's up.
Yes, and endowments for nonprofits are invested even more conservatively than private.
Yeah.
You know, you have to pass it on, I guess, is the idea, but yeah, we do an annual review of people who used as our investments, so, and they recently had a review and they voted to go ahead for another year with JJ, so...
Okay. Why is, so why are people taking books on? What's going on? I'm serious, you know, I mean, because everything else is down, you know?
Yeah.
Book circulation is down, people are, people are either reading online or, you know, on their...
Well, that's counted in those statistics, digital books, digital audio books, that's all counted in those, in the seventeen thousand.
Okay.
I think some of it had to do with the fact that we went fine-free last year.
Okay.
Which has been really great, because we don't charge late fees for items returned, and everyone's like, oh gosh, what's gonna happen? We have more items coming back, and people are donating, they're encouraged to make a donation to the library when they return an item late. So we've made more in donations than we ever did in fines. More items come back because they don't have a stack of books that are, like, guilty of that.
Well, I mean, you're always worried about the stoplights coming to the door to go...
Right, no, and, you know, so that has held steady. It really helps our families, so that, you know, each kid takes out five books, suddenly you get a twenty-dollar fine, and, you know, you're... So I think that had something to do with it, but also, we've been definitely putting ourselves out there a little more, that we're an option, that we're there for you, and that we always have new books, every week there's something new. Other than that, I have no idea why, but I'm very pleased with it.
Yeah.
Also, our online catalog, we're doing a lot in interlibrary loan now, so after joining a consortium of libraries, which includes the downtown library, Brooks, and some of these big ones, like Brattleboro, Rutland, it gives people access to pretty much everything. And we have an even wider net to cast now, so I think that might account for some of it. If it exists and a library is willing to give it to us, lend it to us, we can get it for you. So, that's, I think, why.
Good, excellent, great, I'm, no, I'm pleased.
It's kind of, yeah, I was, I got even a phone call, are you sure? You know, those librarians were like...
Yeah.
I was like, I don't, I don't own, but I'm very pleased about it.
Good.
So our Friends of the Library group has, to help meet the shortfalls in our budget this year, very generously, they're funding all of our book, magazine, DVD, audiobook purchases this year. They can't do that every year, but we had a little bit, and they were willing to do that this year, which is kind of amazing. They make most of their money at our book and bake sale, September 15th and 16th this year, it's gonna be great. So we're thanking our donors, we're trying to bring them in, working on doing this more, doing more for ourselves, so we can keep the funding for this level, at least. Let's see, and we've applied for a lot of grants, received a lot of gifts and grants for specific items such as the pump in our basement, so we don't have to do that. We had, like, a tiny leak after this huge rainstorm, but the pump was working, so I can only imagine what it would have been like without that. So there was that, and we've recently received, like, a huge grant for books and programs through the Cliff, the Children's Literacy Fund, for the children's room. We have a new book drop on the porch, you know, so we're kind of trying to find other ways, the Fund for North Bennington funded that. Trying to find different ways of making ends meet, it's not entirely relying on the towns, so, let's see. And as it, as is like now, we don't anticipate asking for an increased appropriation for next year, we're hoping to keep that pretty level. You know, pending some huge oversight that I don't see right now, but perhaps just to meet, you know, like, rising wage costs or something like that, but it won't be huge, level or a very small increase. So, that's the update from the library, our summer reading program was huge, we had our concert at Lake Perrin, which was like the finale for that, but I don't have the exact figures, but there were hundreds and hundreds of tickets that kids who participated filled out this summer. For books and, you know, educational science packs and things like that that they took out over the summer. So, we're busy and it's fun, and we couldn't do it without funding from the town, so...
Well, I think you're to be congratulated, because I feel you turned the corner on some of it. I kind of got the idea the libraries were kind of like on a decline, and this is really exciting, and you're a big part of that, and thank you very much.
Well, I like to tell folks that we're not a box, we're a portal, so it's not just what we have in the building, it's, every library is a portal into almost every other library, and being able to help folks put library services in the context of their day-to-day life. We're here to make it a little easier, so that's...
Anybody else, any other comments or anything?
Thank you.
Eric, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Have a cool evening.
Yeah.
Not in this room.
Melanie, would you like to get it over with? You may want to move out of the sun.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I've been nothing here long.
All right.
Just the doldrums, there's not really much going on. You can see some money coming in, we got the highway, the first of our four highway state aid payments there, that's the bulk of the revenue for this, for the past month. A lot of this we've already talked about, because we had a meeting two weeks ago. Some delinquent taxes, not much else going on. You can look down at the disbursements, those are outlets you've already talked about and already approved.
Yeah.
If you want to go down to the bottom, you can see where we are versus budget, and see how it looks compared to last year. We spent money a little bit, a little bit slower in this July versus last July, I didn't look at the reasons for that, but it's really not very much money really in the large scheme of things. And revenue was pretty similar to last year. It's so early in the year, you can't, you can't make any, you know, draw any conclusions about how we're gonna do with budget, it's just too early. So that's where we are with the cash flow for the month, any questions about any of that? We, you can see that our cash position right now is right about, right around three-hundred thousand dollars, so we don't need to do a draw yet, but I might do a hundred-thousand-dollar draw on the line of credit before I go on vacation, just, just in case. I don't like to let it go get too low, and I'm going to be leaving Friday, August 17th, and returning the following Friday, but probably not in time for my usual office hours, but I will look in to just see what's been going on in my absence, and then get back on Monday. If you want to look at the, the other sheet, the reserve funds, nothing going on here except for water, you can see down there about halfway through, just some water coming in. Those are sort of the, mostly people who missed, who missed the original deadline, so that's just late water. Any questions about any of that?
The money we're, we're going to draw for the hundred thousand dollars, is that from the bond that we have for paying for the garage, or is that...
No, that's completely separate, it's just a line of credit, you approved the paperwork, I think, two meetings ago, so we did that early enough so that I haven't actually had to draw anything yet. I'm a little worried about it because of, looks like tax money's gonna be coming in later than last year, but, so we're still waiting for a grand list, but I think we're pretty close to that, right?
Yeah, we are getting close to that, but we will be spending a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars over the next three weeks...
Right.
To finish the job on East Road. And we get reimbursed later, grant, but we have to pay that out front.
The money has to be paid off.
Yeah, right, yeah, I've taken that into account, so, so there's, it's gonna be something that I need to watch every day, which I will.
How does it work to draw on the money that we have, the bond? Is that something you can do, or does...
No, wait, actually, you can explain this.
We do, we do it together, basically, there's, if he gets a bunch of, Dave will get a bunch of invoices, and we can either submit the invoices before we've paid them, and then to the, to the holders of the money, and then they'll transfer the money generally that same day, the next day. Or else if we've already spent it, then they'll reimburse it, we've done it both ways, and it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, now it'll probably be easier, because everything now is gonna come through Russell, and they're all gonna be big ones, so it'll be easier just to draw directly out of the bank.
Yeah, okay.
I was asked by a citizen the other day, would the tax bill's going up?
Yeah, well, that's what we were just saying, if we don't have a grand list, we don't even have a tax rate yet, so...
You don't have any idea?
I hope it'll be September, but I'm sort of at the, you know, at the mercy of the lister, so as soon as they get them...
We are hoping, you know, as soon as possible, but I would think the beginning of September is realistic, but there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee, something could go amiss and it could get delayed.
Yeah.
I was in here this morning and met a man by the name of Robert, is he, is he...
Yes, he's the new assessor for the town.
So it's pretty much up to him, I mean, the listers don't...
Well, yeah, he's been doing that, we've had the state in here, because, as you know, we've had multiple turnovers in here, and we've made great progress, but we're in the last stages, the appeals went in, last week, they had the hearings last week, they have to be taken care of, there's a couple of House visits to do, and the paperwork has to be filed, and then it has to be launched, so, you know, September is realistic, unless someone throws a monkey wrench in it.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be nice if, in two, I mean, we don't have a tax rate, so in two weeks, I would hope to be able to present the tax rate to you guys to sign off on, it might not be until first week of September.
Yeah, it may not be.
Okay.
And then as soon as we have that, then I can jump up. But I'm just waiting for it right now, we got an extension, and I can't do anything.
So if everything goes good, you're looking at very, what, first, second week of September?
Yeah, I mean, I've got, I've got to print them, I've got to stuff the envelopes, I've got to get them into the mail streams.
Well, I'm not gonna figure that out.
No, it's more likely to be in their hands later in September, if we, we don't even, as I say, we don't even have a tax rate yet, so...
Yeah.
Like I say, I would just ask my assistant.
Yeah, and people are asking me to, believe me, mid to late September is what I'm telling people.
Okay.
The goal is after this round, because we have had a lot of turnover in the assessor's position, and this is his first time through this, he's a very experienced assessor, but he hasn't worked this end of the business before. So the goal is, we get through this one, and next year we get them out directly on schedule that the state has, they should really be out now, but, you know, we've had, like I said, we've had our ups and downs up in the US.
But we've gotten ourselves into a pattern of being, getting an extension every single year, and I would really love to be able to break out of that.
That would be great, okay.
Yeah, it's not the way to do business.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
The roads report.
Have we made a public announcement, do we do have a new public works?
Just about to, because this is my last road report. We have hired a new director of public works, who will be Mike Yanati, he's very experienced through V-Trans, he's worked for a number of local contractors, he's done everything from large V-Trans projects, he's a regional, area supervisor for V-Trans, he was until we hired him. He'll be starting a week from today, and he brings a lot of skills we need in organization, and...
He's local, he lives in Shafter's.
And he lives in Shafter's.
Right.
We spent a good year looking for the right person to fill this job, that's changed quite a bit from the old concept of a road foreman, it's now gonna encompass a lot of planning, it's the parks, it's the highway department, it's the water department. It just requires a lot more planning, a lot more involvement in things, and over the last few years, we've about squeezed everywhere we can, and we need to start looking at being more efficient in the deployment of manpower, the application of materials, and that all comes from generating the proper data to see where things are and how long it takes to do certain things, and how people are deployed correctly. So we look to modernize a bunch of our computer capabilities there, so that we can generate what we need and plan out what we need to make the crew more efficient. We have a good crew, it's, we just need some organization, some, some time to get that going, and we can look at the material we're using, and if it's being used efficiently and effectively, there's a, there's a whole array of things. And Mike brings background, that includes a degree in construction administration, an organizational level that we can use here, and planning for different projects, everything from the chain-up area on Seven to the circles in Manchester, to a number of things he's done with V-Trans over the years. So he's very experienced, and he has a lot of road experience, and he can run every piece of equipment there is. We had a long meeting with him last week, and it's, it's great, because he has one idea after another, and a lot of them will make things run a lot quicker and a lot smoother here, and I'm looking forward to getting, getting it started. We'll be able to address in a, in a proper sequential order, with a lot more organization getting things, getting things done, so I'm looking forward to it, and then I won't have to come in here and make these road reports every morning. But he will be, he will be at the next meeting to make his first road report, he starts next Monday, and we're looking forward to the big changes and bringing the right, the right ideas and the right personality into the new garage to get the most out of that, too. So I think it's, I think it's a good deal for the town, looking forward to it. Another road matters, as everyone knows, we've had a lot of washouts, we had a lot of sides, roads are washed out, we were getting to a lot of them today, a tree that took out the side of Bayhand Road, and the ball came out and left a little edge on the road gone, that took nearly a tandem to fill. Then they filled up a lot of them with two more tandem loads around town, we had to go back and do all the new culverts on East Road, because it's downhill, so it all dug out potholes. The graders we're out for today, tomorrow we have a severe thunderstorm watch by two o'clock, so there will be no grading tomorrow, Wednesday it's supposed to rain, so there'll be no grading on Wednesday. So Thursday and Friday are looking better, and we're hoping to get to a lot of the washes, we know it's a little inconvenient, but there's just, there's no point in trying to do them now, they'll just get wet and get worse, so... We did what we could last Friday and today, but whenever you have long periods of dryness like this, and then torrential downpours, which appears to be what we're gonna have tomorrow with forty to sixty mile an hour winds, too, so it could be an interesting afternoon, but we are getting to them as best we can. The, the East Road project, they're going to start milling that probably next week, we don't have a confirmation yet, but they believe they'll be done on their job over, I think they're in Dover, so they'll come and they'll mill the road next week. It's posted, please slow down, everyone, we have multiple signs up and cones, a number of which have been stolen, which is quite depressing, because I actually had to order twenty new traffic cones, and they've had ten stolen already, and, you know, so the signs are up, but people are still simply driving down what's posted as slow construction zone, construction zone, rough road, and they're still hitting it, you know, about fifty miles an hour, so...
This is more than just scraping it on top, they actually grind the whole thing?
Yeah, oh yeah, this is gonna be rebuilding the whole thing, and then they, you know, they mill it back in, and we'll level that out, that'll sit for a few days, maybe a week, depends, I don't know what Springfield's schedule is after that, I have to check, because everyone's kind of getting a little backed up, the rain, of course, is backing up all the paper, too, so... It's weather and road construction, and so is a problem, so, but we do expect that to start next week, and I'll put it on the website when I have a confirmation, I've been posting things about closures and slow roads on the website, on the front page, for anything major like the East Road project is, and when anything else comes up like that. But those will be the big things for now, and then we'll take it from there.
Do you think, Dave, we've got just a washout, I mean, we don't have to grade the whole road, where even if it's gonna storm, you could take the grader and just clean the ditch, or just touch it up?
Well, they haven't done stuff like that, and last week they did a lot of areas, just running from one to the other with the grader.
Yeah, 'cause when it gets like that, you can do that.
Yeah, yeah, just trying to get them, get them passed up.
And that turns through the whole road.
This past weekend, we really took out a lot, and, you know, we had today.
A lot of water.
And now we're gonna have it pouring tomorrow, and from what I've heard, pouring on Wednesday, so it's likely to get a little worse before it gets better, but they are trying to get to as many as they can, and they are, like, moving to spot to spot.
Yeah.
There's some, you know, there's...
Are they going out when you're gonna have storms like that, traveling around roads to check culvertings and stuff?
Yeah, last week we did that a lot, actually, to, went around to...
Because you can, you can save a road that way.
Yeah, yeah, actually, getting back, and this is another thing where we're, we were talking about the difference of organizing and planning, and, you know, you need it coming from right there, you need the, the organization and the day-to-day management of it to keep things moving in a timetable, I mean, I can set up a parameter for a week...
Yeah.
And for the season, and for the... And for the season and for, but you need the day-to-day, let's, let's move along. We have the crew, we have the equipment and I think we're going to get the organization and we'll just be able to, I think increasing productivity just through organization will make a huge difference.
Oh, I do too, but like I say, it's, I gaffe and I emphasize it a lot. When you get a storm, you got to have them guys out there.
I tell you, one of the things about Mr. Yanati is he likes to work.
Oh, I, I got that one, yeah.
He, he definitely has ideas on what to do on rainy days and what to do on other days. He's already asking me what equipment, you know, he can rent and what soft, you know, I'm like, you come up with an idea, you come tell me and I'll get you the equipment, you know? If you can do, we're talking about cutting back a lot of canopy and how, from his experience in V-Trans, they rented a boom and, you know, how they walked the road and do it, I'm like, you know, set it up, tell me what you need, I'll find the money. If you can do that much work in this much time, then let's go, you know? We can always find a way without just shuffle, you know, one thing from another to, to make it work, but he has, he has a lot of good ideas on making things move, so I think we'll be doing well. That's all I have for roads. You can go right into town garage if you want.
Yep.
All right, we had a meeting today at MSK with Russell. I was kind of going over some of the final details down there. One thing that came up is the wiring, the power for the compactor and the shed at the transfer station. The original plans, all the power is going to be coming from the main building there on one meter. Now, that, that was a good idea except that the transfer station has to be up and running before the garage is even built. So, there's a way to do that. But I was thinking too that in the management contract, there's a fee for electricity and everything, so what I'm thinking now is, and I asked them to prepare a change order, we don't think there's any expense to this because it probably will be easier for the electrician to do it this way, is to run a conduit to the transfer station site, meter it there and we'll have two bills, one for the garage and one for the transfer station. And that would also assist in billing this out. In the new contract we'll have with TAM, which we'll start negotiating next month, you know, the services there, utilities are part of the contract we have with TAM, so it would separate the charges out. It was something that kind of, it seemed like a good idea, have it all go through the building, one conduit, but now, you know what, this works easier for everybody right now because they can run the conduit over this way and then later on, the conduit will go to the salt shed with the lights up there. But we'll have two different bills and two different circuits, so I thought that was a good idea and he's going to let me know if there'll be any changes with that, any costs with that, we don't really think so.
Most towns are getting out of the transfer business.
Yes, well, most towns were, aren't in this business and I've had a discussion with, with TAM and briefed through the board, but we're going to start getting into this. The contract we have now, we're really, it's really kind of a mixed in altogether here. This, let him, just like Casella runs Bennington's, Casella runs Sunderland's, Casella runs this one, TAM runs other ones, and they just run it soup to nuts. And, you know, we've talked about the possibility that they can sell the pay-to-throw tickets. We would still sell the access permits here as a way of controlling who gets them, but the actual pay-to-throws would be controlled by TAM and that would go directly towards the fees he's charging. There's a lot of ways to, to do this, but it might be time to take us completely out of this business. But it's all, it's all up for discussion.
Yep, okay.
A lot of the rest of the discussion today was really about, you know, how this should have but this corner and the two engineers talking about, so I was kind of like, okay.
It's over, it's over and above us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's like, as long as it works, fellas, it's, it's good with me. We talked about the 18-foot ceiling, replacement of the fans because the fans were supposed to be on the gable ends, but they don't really work that way. By the north side, there's a door on the north side that faces North Road.
Yes.
The intake vent will be low and it'll come out low on the floor. That'll be to sweep the heavy gases that might accumulate from the floor level and then it'll go out on the east side in the blower. And the blower itself, the whole system itself will like change the air in no time. It's going to be set up to a system that will detect any high volumes of any, any gases. And also has a manual, you can just turn it on to cool the building off because it's, it's really going to move air through that building.
What did you say, gas tank, what, what do you mean?
Exhaust fumes, things like that now.
Exhaust fumes?
Exhaust fumes and things like that, which are heavier and will twin to same towards.
Okay, how about a propane leak or a gasoline leak or something like that?
I don't think that it would detect those, I could ask for you, but I don't think it will detect those.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, but it's mostly meant for exhaust fumes.
All set on the color?
All set on the color, we're not discussing color anymore. I did, I did make a.
Well, I thought we had done it a year ago.
Well, we had.
Yeah, yeah.
We had and, and, yeah, so we're done with the color.
Okay.
But I did make the executive decision that the, the louvers on the exhaust fan would be the same color as the siding, so.
Oh, that's good.
I didn't want to contrast that one, so.
And you got rid of the big rock.
The big rock has been moved. That was a big rock. However, we haven't agreed on, on the price yet.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be trimmed down a bit, yeah. But that's a contractual thing, but I thought he was asking too much to move. It was a big rock though.
Well, yeah, we had, we had been back over there too.
Yeah, it was a big rock.
I'm thinking that the glacier that brought that down.
Yeah.
That was a big rock.
Yeah, you know, we were talking about, well, push it over the side, it was like, wow, what's going to stop that and just keep going. We're all right down.
So, they have, is that a price that they have?
No, no, we're working on the price.
How about your actual workers involved, Dave?
I don't have that exact number right now. How many hours do you need?
Well, I mean, as far as moving earth, compacting earth.
Well, that's a discussion we have and it's like, how many hours and what equipment was used to do this? And maybe you better trim that down a little because that was.
Yeah, because actually moving that rock, come on now.
Well, but it's, the big thing is, is the rock is this big, but the level is supposed to be here, so they had to dig all the way down around it, dig out here to shove it, then they have to fill all this back in and compact it because the permit for, for the pond, retention pond, it has to be at this level and it has to go over here, so. And you're not coming back to the state to say, can we alter this permit?
No, no, no.
Do that. Just trying to think if there's anything else here. Like I said, most of this was a lot of technical questions back and forth, question of the ceiling, but this is all stuff that comes from order in anyway.
Get right on it.
I had actually forgotten there's a ceiling in this building, but there's a ceiling, you know, over the height of the.
That's a wall wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah, it goes up, it's like 18 feet off the ground, so.
It's a sound absorbing ceiling too.
Yeah, and it's, you know, obviously it's great for, for utilities because it'll really keep the insulation down. This building is completely compliant, needless to say, with Vermont law, so it should be pretty good. And the other thing that when Tim returns, we now have the change order that we all voted on and approved before the other week, now we have the actual change order that has to be signed, so there's a lot of redundant signing in this, but.
Okay.
That's about it. And then that's it for that and call hall, just go on for a second, that we've agreed construction will start in here the second week in December and should be finished by the beginning of February. It just happened to be the time of year that works best for us because we can't, we're all going to be sharing desks for about two months and we can't be throwing taxes and everything else when we're, so the Christmas and New Year's period just seems to be like the quietest time. It works for our contractor too, needless to say. And I am getting an estimate to replace all the windows downstairs because when you get a strong rain and a blowing wind, the water literally comes through the windows. They will not be, they will look like the windows, but they're not, you know, antique windows, they're functional windows.
They're vital.
Sorry?
Vital?
Yeah, yeah. They, they'll look nice, but they're not going to be wildly expensive. So, right now, when you have water coming through the, all the, all the windows, it's kind of bad when they're closed. All right. We have, oh yeah, this blocked out, we have the resolution for the municipal planning grant. And I can read that if you'd like. We are getting a planning grant to, for the planning commission. We have to rewrite the town plan, it's required every five years, so this will be $7,000 to help fund that process. That'll help BCRC with map production and other efforts to help get the town plan going.
About 100% grant, no matching funds?
No, there's no matching, there's no. It's, it's our time, so. I can read this if you want? No? Okay. Well, then it's a municipal resolution for the municipal planning grant and it designates myself as the, the, where is it? The Grant Electronic Application Reporting System person. Tim would be the second one as a member of the select board. Chris Williams is the grant administrator. And that requires a motion on the board to adopt this resolution.
So, vote.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken, second by Tony, that the board approve the, accepting the grant, is that right?
Applying for the grant.
Applying for the grant, okay. Any discussion? How was the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 400.
That's what I thought.
Board, do you want some second?
Aye, he's wanting to be asked to sign on the back there.
Legislative body, that must be us. Don't think we have to want anything there. Just go on, keep sort of looking for cones. Do we put our Shaftesbury Highway Department on them or?
Uh, you know, no.
That'd cost more work.
That'd cost more money to get them personalized. Yeah, it was a shame because we, we had to use somebody up at the transfer station to try and make rider up there. These would take, we had 10 culverts, so we had 20 cones out here. Our traffic control people loaned us a bunch of their cones, which started to get stolen. I ordered 20 cones and half of those were stolen. So, you know, you're supposed to have these marked, but it's, they're just disappearing left and right.
Get some grease out of them, they won't be so appealing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
So, but we have, we have the signs up and, yeah, there's not much else we can do. We put them out and they disappear.
Yeah, there wasn't.
If they weren't, no, they wouldn't be so appealing.
Yeah, I know, maybe I should swap them with the transfer station, put the old dirty ones out there.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know?
Action items.
Might not be as crazy as it sounds.
We have a personnel issue that we have to discuss, so I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, vote.
Second.
Okay. Ken and Joe.
Ken and Joe.
How was the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
All right.